Roll call to Debbie.
Mrs. Danny. Mrs. Ellis.
Here.
Mrs. Sasmar.
Here.
Mrs. Humphrey.
Here.
Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Mr. C. South.
Here.
Mr. Tinsley.
Here.
Mr. Arm.
2.01, approval of minutes. The motion is to approve the minutes in the reorganization meeting of December 2nd, 2019. B is the motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of December 2nd, 2019. C is the motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of January 8th, 2020. Do I have this motion?
Submit.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions or comments? Motion passed. 2.02 is the invoice listing. The motion is to approve the invoice listing for November and December 2019 through January 2020. Do I have this motion?
Submit.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03, treasurer's report, Ms. Powell.
As of November 30th, 2019, Pendelco's balance was $42,414,497. During December 2019, local state federal revenues totaled $11,526,279. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $7,020,510. As of December 31st, 2019, Pendelco's current balance is $46,920,266. The motion is to report, to approve the treasurer's report for November to December 2019. Do I have this motion?
Submit.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. The motion is to approve the budget transfer report for December 2019. Do I have this motion?
Submit.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, community recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Humphrey. I'm pleased to announce that tonight we have our state representative, Leanne Kruger, here, who would like to address the board in recognition of National School Board Appreciation Month for the month of January. We're very happy to host and have Ms. Kruger here, representative.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. Pleased to let you know that last week I introduced a resolution on the House floor. I introduced a resolution on the House floor, again honoring January as School Directors' Month, and it passed unanimously with bipartisan support. Now, not every bill related to public education passes unanimously with bipartisan support in Harrisburg these days, but every single one of my colleagues joined me in recognizing the service that our volunteer here school board members give to our community. I often say, I think you've got one of the hardest elected offices. You work long hours, these jobs are unpaid, people stop you in the grocery store with questions about busing, or football turf, or new curriculum, and even though you're serving the volunteer position, you're really on duty to serve our kid and his little family. So I here, again, another here and I would say thank you so much for your service. My door is always open on public education issues in Harrisburg. There was recently a bill that I, Dr. Steinhoff called me again on the House floor, that would have been devastating to our public school education, taking money away from our public schools and sending it right to private schools at a point where Pennsylvania is the most unequally funded state when it comes to how much we're investing in our public education. And again, there was bipartisan opposition to this bill. We were able to stop it twice on the House floor, but when Dr. Steinhoff called and said, "This is a bad bill," I said, "I'm with you, I'm planning to vote no on it," and we were able to stop it for now. So thank you, each of you, for your service. Again, my door is always open if you need anything, and I've got certificates of recognition for each of you.
Thank you, Representative Kruger, again. And I just want to thank you for your support for Pendelco. I feel fortunate that if I had the call center, Killian's office, we get support, if we call your office, we get support. We're very fortunate to have two legislators representing our district and really playing hard for public education, so thank you for that. Thank you for coming out and recognizing the school board. And now I think you may also have to get to an event for your son tonight.
My son is a Boy Scout. He has his Pinewood Derby tonight. So he's there actually with his babysitter, who is a senior at Sun Valley. She's a wonderful Grace Keely on the softball team. So Grace is watching him. I got him there and said I would come back after I was here. So apologies for leaving early. Thank you again for the invitation.
Thank you. Let in for super tense reports to continue on. Good evening, everyone. I also want to take a moment during school board recognition month to thank all nine of our volunteer board members who willingly step up to serve the community, to support our teachers, our staff, and our students. There's no one on the board who sits on this school board for status, or for attention, or for special privilege. They have to do the same things the parents have to do. They have to get up early when it's time to register their kids for kindergarten, just like everybody else. So it truly serves the love, and I know that most of you don't like to draw attention to yourselves either, but it's worthwhile to note that people in the community and the staff appreciate what you do, and that we rely on the work that you do, and we appreciate you, deeply appreciative of that. We're nearing the end of what has been a decade-long effort to improve many of the school facilities, and particularly, we are reaching final phasing at Sun Valley High School. At a prior meeting this month, the school board rejected all bids for the next phase of work. It was the responsible thing to do. At a prior meeting, they rejected all bids for the phase of the work, as I mentioned, and in light of that, we asked Mr. Donnane and Mr. Christopher Peters, who we've worked with for some years, and are representatives from an architectural firm, NN Architects, come out to the meeting tonight and to share some next step options, answer some questions that you may have. I also thought in light of the fact that this project at Sun Valley has now gone on for a couple of years, that we should pause and kind of just see, kind of again reflect on what we've done, where we are in this project, to make sure that it comes to positive fruition and positive completion that we're looking for. The project's really so important to the district and to the valley, I'm more than happy to yield some time in my super tense report to have Mr. Peters and Mr. Main out, so I'll turn it over to them and enable a presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Christopher Peters, and Donnane is here as well. We do have a brief presentation. It will take a brief review of the projects that we've undertaken at Sun Valley High School over the past few years, and then we will talk about a few of the options, tracks for our next steps. So just as a review, we had three main projects to date, summer 2016 restroom renovations, 2017 the cafeteria kitchen renovations, and then we had a multi-phase classroom project, including the science classrooms and the media center renovation that started in the summer 2018. And just as a quick review for that, summer 2016, these are a couple of images we have in the slideshow tonight, just to show those completed projects. Restrooms, there's a few groupings throughout the school that were completed. Cafeteria, kitchen, the new serving line, new skylight, new kitchen equipment, new flooring in 2017. And then project three included the classrooms. Picture on the right is one of the science classrooms. Picture on the left is the media center, that three-phase approach using the modules that were outside of the C wing. So that's where we've come so far. This is a quick drawing of the areas that we've touched, it's a little washed out, but on the right side, in light green, there's the classroom wing, the B wing, the C wing that we renovated most recently. The areas, the smaller areas that are in blue, those rectangles, are the restrooms that we renovated, renovating most of the restrooms throughout the building to date. So that's scattered. And then on the upper left is the kitchen cafeteria area. So the majority of the space has been touched, as you're aware, not hatched, is the auditorium, the gym, main office, and some of the other classrooms, specifically the A wing. So next steps, these were some of the tracks that we've been talking about, and we were asked to pursue. Track, and these are all happening concurrently to varying degrees, and I can go through these, and then if you have any questions specifically on these, we can answer those. Track one, KPM, which is the purchasing network here in Pennsylvania. We have asked that group to price the full project, the full project meaning the project that you just rejected the bids for, through that route. Track two, we have purchasing pricing coming in for just the window replacement throughout the perimeter of the building, including the facade repair, specifically the EFS repair. That's being priced separately, and actually we had a meeting this afternoon regarding that, regarding scope, and we should have the pricing for that in a couple of weeks. Track three, the repackaging of the drawings for public rebid, reducing the project scope. So specifically, that would include the project that we just bid that was voted to not go through with. The reduced scope would be the canopy and the admin wing, nurses addition. So repackaging, really creating a bid drawing or bid package that's a little bit smaller that we can go out for public bid again. And then the fourth track that will happen concurrently is what to do with the auditorium, redesigning the auditorium. And then really, the last phase of this Sun Valley scope is to address the gymnasium and the locker room scope. So that whole design piece would also need to happen as well. Down below there is just a quick bar chart of how that might play out. The full project pricing with an unknown about construction on that. The windows, we can get pricing right now, replace the windows over the summer for the whole building, so we're working on that. They're checking lead times on that, so that's definitely in the works. And then for the track of the rebid drawings, we can work on those and still pick up some of that, start that in the summer. The nurses addition could finish that at the end of the year. And then the unknown for the redesign, what to do with the auditorium, gymnasium, we'll be talking about that now, and then construction could happen later. So that's the general four-track approach that we're taking right now to investigate all options. If you have any, that's the last slide, I believe, so I don't know if you have any questions or comments on that.
Christopher, one of the questions a board member asked last week was, what would the process be to look at the existing auditorium? So for you to go back in there and kind of explain how long that might take, because we never directed you to consider a renovation of the existing auditorium, but if the new auditorium is indeed too expensive, if it's beyond Pendelco's means, or we think that it's not the right way to spend those millions of dollars, can maybe to explain to the board what the process would be to go back in and take a look at the existing auditorium?
Sure. And the good, I mean, the good news is we've went through all the design process with the staff and those folks that would use that. So we have all that information, we would just have to use that to get it into that square footage and go through that design process and say, "Well, we can fit this in here, with this size stage, we can do this amount of rigging and what you can do, or you can fit this many seats in here." So we would spend, you know, a couple of months going back and forth, drawing something, and having them respond to it, make sure it's what they want to do, and it still works for the footprint of the auditorium specifically. I don't know if you have anything to add, Don, to that?
Yeah, it would be a similar approach to what we've taken with the other phases in the project, where we work with the administration and faculty input, and then there would be that option with an updated cost estimate could be brought back then for the board's review. And at the end of that design process, then, we would look for the board, if that's the direction you want to move forward, to authorize that and put the construction drawings together and then go out to bid with that piece of it. But what we were thinking about with the remaining areas in the school is, it probably makes sense to address the revisions as they relate to the auditorium, but to also do the drawings for the athletic areas in the building as well, the locker rooms and so forth, so that all of the remaining scope has been drawn and could be put out for pricing. So you would have all your variables, you would have all those variables, all that pricing at once, so that as you're deciding to finish up the scope in the building, that you would have, you know, all those numbers in hand with that project. And with a reduced scope on the auditorium potentially, and knowing that we have been trying to do this in sort of a methodical way where we were keeping the phases manageable, we feel that that last phase could be a manageable phase, so that you could work through it in a way that, you know, the nice thing about the process up to this point is that as we've gone through each of these phases, it really hasn't been disruptive building-wide or to, you know, the overall use, and so that this last phase could be managed in that same area.
And I think in looking back, I have to say, doing this project in phases has really done justice for the kids at Sun Valley, but I don't believe it has detracted from their place of experience, and that was a great consideration to be embarked upon, doing manageable steps, and not put any kids in positions where their memories of their time at Sun Valley was just a construction site. And that would be why different groups wise, we'll consider that for the other pieces. And then in terms of the entrance and the nurses suite, potentially taking those back out to bid again?
Yeah, so the good news is, is all of that's drawn. So all we need to do is remove the scope that associated with the auditorium that we're going to look at design options for, but we can very quickly have that back out on the street, so that we're bidding it in this early timeframe, early 2020 timeframe, to get that out where we still have contractors that are interested in looking at it. So our goal would be to do that as quickly as possible and get, you know, get those out on the street so we can get numbers in as quickly as we can.
Are there any, for the windows, are there any other lighting or energy controls being dealt with, and this could be a form of an energy savings project?
Not as part of that project.
As part of the window project?
Not as part of the window project right now.
Any other questions?
Track three, when we're putting out to reduce scope, reduce scoped is moving the auditorium. That's the reduced scope part?
That's correct. So you would be bidding, track three is to get the scope, the main office, main entry, I should say, there's very limited renovation in the main office, a conference room reconfiguration, and then the addition of the nurses area, get that scope only back out to bid, so that that works can be addressed. And then look at the balance in a comprehensive one last design phase, look at the balance of the work in the building, which would be art wing, auditorium, and athletics, athletic zones of the building in one final scope.
I get it, these are guestimates. Guestimates, the same related to COVID and et cetera. So excluding the gymnasium and locker room, it's about nine months, nine months for the auditorium, locker rooms. The reason I say that is about three quarters of that additional three quarters, so it's the whole thing, the top and the bottom. Is that what you're, give or take, nine months excluding the auditorium?
To do the design work or the construction work? I'm sorry.
The whole Q2, Q3, Q4, that looks, that's everything but the auditorium?
That's everything but the, that's the, this current project that we bid, less the auditorium worked great.
And then this would be the 16 months?
Would be the auditorium, athletics, you know, and that could be shortened up a little bit. I think that's, that 16 month is a conservative estimate, but until we work out a phasing plan that we know, want to make sure that we go through a phasing plan, so we put a conservative time.
I get it, that's what I'm saying. I know it's a guestimate for COVID, but give or take about nine months from that part, and then everything goes on, it's hard, give or take is nine. We're trying to budget it as far as the classroom, whether it affects the auditorium or affects the gymnasium, et cetera.
Yeah, we, and actually, in speaking with some of the performing arts teachers Friday night at the oral festival, they are recognizing that there is a possible plan to see here, if you will, that despite the board's best efforts and ideals of going out and building the auditorium, if the prices are so far beyond what we had ever imagined, if it was irresponsible to build the auditorium at that choice point, they are understanding that we would have to go back and take a look at renovating the auditorium. But they also appreciate the fact that we're trying to build, we're going back, still looking at this one more time with track one, right, trying to find another way to possibly fund that. But the point they brought up, Mr. Tinsley, was they would understand that if we went down the renovation phase, then that would mean likely that some of the high school auditorium events would have to take place in the auditorium. If they would get that, there's a cost, you know, to doing this work in terms of inconvenience and having some of those shows down there.
That's the follow-up question, related to Northlake, that's where we also wanted to catch the whole X amount of money if you want to run the Northlake, that's not even on this particular slide?
No, we believe if the decision ultimately is to renovate the existing auditorium, that that'll free up enough funds from our borrow amounts that we could then consider pricing up, renovation of the Northlake auditorium, which is just as much of an E, right? So at a minimum, you know, we're looking at upgrading seats, some lighting issues there, so that would give us the ability to circle back to Northlake and to address that auditorium.
But if a husband and wife, if you both have cars, your brother's not going to get your car into the shop as soon as that car, if you have no cars. So this is what we're saying here, is you're not going to try to renovate both auditoriums at the same time, you'd have no auditorium.
We'll always have one. Any other questions for Mr. Peters or Mr. Main? Okay, thank you, I'll continue. One second, Doctor. Thank you, Christopher. I want to take a moment tonight, since we're actually talking about chorus and auditorium, to really compliment and I'm sure to be aware of Nicole Moyer, who is the oral arts teacher at Sun Valley High School. It was Friday night when I was at Sun Valley delivering these kind of brief opening remarks to the PMEA chorus festival, and I realized that the success of that evening was in large part due to Nicole's work as the festival director. And that was a performance where over 160 of some of the best high school singers from the region from over 32 schools came together for several days and made new friends, enjoyed their commonalities and their talents, and they worked with the guest conductor, and Sun Valley played the perfect host. With all the logistics for that, all had to be done by Nicole, whilst she's also training, you know, four of our own singers who made it there as well. So it was a great night, a lot of compliments from visitors who came in and saw the show. It was important that I share that with you. Of our four singers, three are advancing on towards this next level, towards all-state recognition, and I'm sure they'll do well. I want to bring to everyone's attention the legislative work that is occurring in Harrisburg to hopefully bring common sense to tuition billing practices for public cyber education. Our state rep alluded to a little bit, but as more and more legislators and residents, taxpayers are learning of the waste and the inequitable funding system that are in place to pay for cyber charter tuition, they're becoming alarmed and they realize that something must change. Fortunately, there are now meaningful hearings in place that hopefully will lead to legislation, I believe, to do some cyber charter tuition relief. Pendelco has to spend over a million dollars in cyber charter tuition that just a couple of years we did not have to spend. That's money that we could put towards programs, that's money we could put towards students, that's money that we could put to better support our employees, perhaps hire more positions to serve students, but that money is money that we don't have. That penalty that we pay to subsidize choices that some people make is significant on top of the 36% markup, if you will, on salaries that we have to pay for our pieces of contribution. So those two items weigh so heavily on our ability to run our budget in a way that we would like to run it. But hopefully, we continue to have some momentum in this area where school districts aren't being asked to pay $24,000, $25,000, $26,000 a year in cyber tuition for students to stay home and learn on their laptop in a program that really is not producing strong results. Pendelco online program that we run at only 20% of that cost gets results, and that's the direction that we really have to continue to go in, have students stay in our programs and meet the needs of learners who learn differently. With tonight's agenda, the board will be asked to approve the calendar for next year. A lot of people have been wondering about that. It's a particularly late Labor Day, so of course there's a question, particularly being at the Ork County School District, you know, are we coming back after Labor Day? The administration has gotten feedback and listened to the board as well, and the calendar that will be approved does have the first start date for students as of the day after Labor Day, and assumes many of the same conditions that were in place for this year. So we've made, in the last couple of years, I think, some improvements to how we do our conferences, how we do our half-days, how we do our stagger times in terms of the start in November, where we can package two of our insertance dates together right up against Election Day, and all those things are still in place, so we appreciate the support for that. Also on the agenda is a list of student ID numbers. These are students whose parents have failed to comply with the required re-verification process. Students will be notified, their families will be notified tomorrow, the last day of school for them would be Friday. There have been many letters, many calls, many reminders. As you know, this is the process we go through every year. It's a much smaller number this year, so I think a lot of parents have been really working hard with us and been supportive of the process. They understand that it's important that we make sure that we are educating students who live in Pendelco School District boundaries, this is part of that process, to ensure that that continues to occur. Our student reps to the board were unable to attend tonight. Mr. Sassy talked to me about it, some of that does have to do with midterms, and I have to go over my approval for that. And I know this evening we have a student in the audience who would like to address the board, and that will be coming up right after items for board information. Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements for the public. In accordance with Act 48 Sunshine Law, the board met an executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Comments by members of the board? Any other board information seen? None?
Yes, on board information, we do have a representative from Pendelco's Case Association that had her words and remarks they wanted to share with the school board. Speak, opposite.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. Good, all right. School board members, this month of January marks not only the beginning of the year, but also school board appreciation month. As one of the social chairs of the PDEA, it is my pleasure to come to this meeting today to express our gratitude and appreciation for each one of you. On behalf of the PDEA, we would like to thank you for your endless support throughout the years. We know that you all work tirelessly to not only keep the students, but also the teachers at the forefront of everything you do, and believe me, your work does not go unnoticed. We value and appreciate the relationship that our union, district, and school board have, and we want to be sure to say that our appreciation does not end on January 31st, but continues throughout the year. Each year, we try to think of something we can give each of you that expresses our gratitude. We know that no- We know that no flower pot, or flowers, or flashlight with a nice little education pun will do, I know, my budget's only so big, but this year we want to give you something that will continue to get back to our community. We'll be donating in your honor to the Aston Public Library so that our appreciation for each of you will continue to help our students and community members grow and learn. We want to thank you for all you do, and we do not thank you enough. If you have a card for the guys at...
Thank you, Mr. Popovich.
Thank you, guys, very much. Members of our discussion, nine on the comments.
Good evening, ladies, Dr. Stein, Hopf, and members of the board. My name is Thomas Walker Higbertes, and I am the Sioux Castle President of Northland Mills School. Now perhaps one of the more controversial decisions that you have made affecting North Lake in recent years has been the removal of backpacks for security reasons, and all those reasons are just, I have for you a list of reasons why you should perhaps bring backpacks back, but with some strings attached to it in order to prevent the behavior that led to their, to them being bad in the first place. Sorry about that.
No, no, it's okay.
So the most obvious reason why backpacks will be back, should be back, is that it is a pain to carry multiple book back. Multiple books at once. I'm unsure if you know this, but we only have four, right, for times we can change stuff in our lockers every day, once at the beginning of the day, before lunch, after lunch, end of day, which makes sense, but the system, I believe, was designed for when we had backpacks. And the main problem with the system is that some classes such as math, ELA, science, they require many books, and things like math books, the math books in particular, can reach up to that, so having, say, a full thing of ELA and science can get up to this, which is cumbersome to carry in the hallways, and backpacks would fix this. But the main thing on your mind when you hear backpacks is the security risks that they pose, though the noble ones that got expelled were, the fact that people are grabbing onto the backpacks and using them to pull and push people with, and also using them as weaponry, and that is of our concern. What I propose is that if backpacks were to be brought back, the punishment for doing these should be extreme in order to prevent this from happening, such as losing backpack privileges and detention for two weeks, for example. I believe that this would be an extreme of punishment to dissuade anyone from attempting any of the behaviors that led to backpack expulsion. I think my, the points that I brought up were enough of a persuasion for you to reconsider your stance on backpacks. Hey, good night.
Okay. Well, thank you. The applause is well-deserved, so you should know it's hard to get up and to speak in public, and most of that was off the top of your head.
I rehearsed, and I rehearsed this, which covered most of the points.
Well, that's smart of you.
Because I've always found that if I have something as like a baseline to work off of, I find that's what I say is sometimes nerves of what I end up typing to situations.
Gotcha. So what will happen is, the school board and myself and Mr. Lucius, we always take feedback from our staff and from students and from parents, and we consider that, and every summer when we redo the code of conduct, we consider the feedback from people. And I'll talk to Mr. Lucius about that, and I'll probably ask you to also send me a copy of your remarks if you'll do that as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for considering my viewpoints.
You're welcome.
All right, items for board action, start on page two, continue on three, four, also on five, personnel classified, finish up on page six. Miss references the Pendelco budget for 2019, 2020, Act 93, Plan PDEA agreement, PDESPA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, and the PA School Code, Section 101, 08D. Do I have this motion? Administrative recommendations to approve all personnel and objects presented. Do I have this motion?
So do.
Questions or comments? All this in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, the board will use, will utilize a consent agenda to approve the agenda items, which start on page six of 10.03, on page seven, and on page eight of 10.15. Does any board member wish to remove any item? If not, I need a motion to approve agenda items 10.03 through 10.15. Note, all contracts, preparation, and solicitation of bids are subject to review and approval from the solicitor. Do I have this motion?
Aye.
Second, questions or comments? All this in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven comments by members of the public, eleven members of the board. Future meetings, next meeting will be Wednesday, February 19th, which is our study session, which will be here in the service center at 7:30, and then the following Wednesday, February 26th, is the board meeting here in the service center at 7:30. Motion for adjournment.
Aye.